Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Winnetka Village Council's study session for April 8th, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everybody to mute your cell phones or other electronic devices. And I'll ask Rob to do a roll call for attendance.
Thank you. Trustee Apitoff?
Here.
Trustee Orsick?
Here.
Trustee Dearborn?
Here.
Trustee Alvinson?
Here.
Trustee Dolman?
Here.
President Rents?
Here.
All right, item two is public comment. This is the time of the evening where anybody in the audience can come on up to the podium, which is in the middle today, and address us on any item that is not on the agenda. So if you're interested in the Indian Hill matter, you're going to have to wait till that presentation comes up. But if you'd like to speak to us on anything else, you're welcome to come on up and share your thoughts.
Hi, Ted Winachenko. So actually, I was going to start off by just saying, yeah, I think the senior housing thing is a good idea. It'll be interesting to see if it actually becomes a thing that's affordable for people, or if it's just a select group of people. But, you know, it really ties into like, the idea that it would have been great, you know, if there was an easy access way from that central development, like to the fields behind New Trier. Like perhaps if there was like some sort of like public sidewalk that had been there for decades and had been in 2000 closed down temporarily while the village discussed it in great detail, and hadn't just been sold away without in the dead of night, as it were. And it really bothers me that statements are made about how comparing and contrasting this body to the parks, about how everything is open, and we listen to comments, and we do things by the rules, when it's clear that it's only in certain situations. And I was thinking back to the Spruce Street stairs, the stairs that were specifically explicitly put there for public access to Spruce Street Beach. In 2000, this was discussed. There was lots of talk about this. The council got together and said, we'll keep that as a public access. And then we move forward to our current generation. And in 2020, 2021, oh, there's some concerns about people going down there. And all of a sudden, those stairs are no longer public access stairs. Those were stairs were put there just for public works access to the beach. They were not. Those stairs were not designed to let the public down to the beach. They were. And we get emails from village staff, directors of departments, the police chief, telling people that were interested in this, well, those stairs are not there for public access, and we got rid of them, when it's just not true. So if you really believe that this body is more open and listens and takes input than the park district, if you believe that you follow your rules better than the park district follows their rules, it's hard for me to see that. And until we're able to like understand where we fail, I, as I said, I make mistakes. I try to acknowledge them. I try to correct them. Here we have the Spruce Street stairs. There are emails from 2020 saying that those were not for public access. And going back to 2020, there's pages of documents showing that the village council explicitly had those stairs there for public access. And yet, the village is silent. The village knows that these statements were false. The village knows that these were inappropriate, that this change was made without public input. But instead, we just sit here and talk about how we listen to the public and how everything is open, and we follow the rules. It's just interesting to me, and sad.
Is that your pen?
No, that was there.
Thank you, Ted. Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and we'll move on. Okay, first off, I'd like to ask Rob to introduce our new community development director.
Sure. Thank you. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you Scott Mangum as our new community development director. Scott was most recently with the the community development director in Lincolnwood, where he served for the last five years. Scott has also served with the city of Evanston, the city of Chicago, city of Des Plaines, and the city of Long Beach, California, in various planning roles, and has over 25 years of experience. Scott holds a bachelor's degree from the University of Wisconsin-Madison and a master's degree in planning from the University of Southern California. And I just want to welcome you and thank you for joining our team.
Welcome.
Yeah.
It's probably the last time you'll hear applause, but enjoy it while you can.
Take it when you can.
Yeah, exactly. Of course, David got a lot of applause last week, right? So that's what you have to look forward to. Welcome aboard. All right, item three this evening is the Indian Hill parking lot redevelopment concept. Tonight, council has invited Dial Realty Development to present a concept proposal for a senior housing project on the Indian Hill train station parking lot. Before we get going, I just wanted to kind of bring everybody up to speed. Some of you were here, some of you weren't. This is quite a while ago that we originally discussed this idea. But I want to say it was definitely pre-COVID, right, 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 Rob? So, pre-COVID, we village council discussed the idea of potentially reaching out to Union Pacific, who owns about 25% of the land at the Indian Hill parking lot slash train station. It seemed to me that it was a development site that could be ripe for one of the initiatives that has been kicking around this village for a long, long time. And that's one that's come up constantly on surveys, and that's the need to find a good place for people to stay in town when they reach a certain age. This site was always attractive to me for that concept because there's a couple really good synergistic things going on there. The first being is it's near the high school. I've found in my involvement in senior housing developments that that's one of the things that people put a high value on is the ability for older generations to connect with younger generations. I actually talked to Paul Sally about this several years ago when we were still in the thinking process. And he was really excited about the idea of having some sort of collaborative with the seniors in town, because it's good for the students and it's good for the seniors. It's an area of town that hasn't that hasn't received a lot of attention. And slowly but surely, we've been chipping away at it with the, you know, with the Talab Coffee Shop, our strategic partnership with the village of Kennelworth on the Green Bay Road corridor, and just a lot of the assistance that Liz had been giving other property owners there to find suitable tenants for large spaces like the furniture store, Plunkett. So this just seemed to be one of those ideas that was at least worth talking about. So I brought to council, and they gave us permission, they gave staff permission to reach out and at least start to find what the potential for acquiring the property was. Well, about the time we were talking about this, UP was in the process of divesting of most of the real estate assays here in Illinois. Several outreaches from the from staff went unrecognized, but then we received some correspondence from UP and their partner in many, many, many of these properties along the train lines, Dial Realty. And so as I've been thinking about this, and as I'm nearing the end of my term, I felt it would be good to at least get the idea out there so people can start talking about it, thinking about it, shaping it. I know we have people here who are probably going to echo concerns right off the bat, which is fine, and that's what the process is all about. For those of you who are here and interested in this, please understand, this is not an approval of any sort. It's just an idea. That's what study sessions are about. That's why we're down here at the table, not up at the dais. We're not voting on anything, but we're talking about it. And this is where we do our talking, and our debating, and our thinking, and all the things that end up there at some point in time to be voted on. And sometimes they never reach it to the dais. So tonight, I thought, since I'm not going to be here all that longer, at least to get the idea out there so people can start thinking about it, talking about it, and maybe moving it along. I don't know. It seems like there's some some good synergy here. And again, I believe it's an area of the village that demands a certain amount of attention as well. And they have kind of been the backend of a lot of our efforts over the years, and would sure be nice to move this forward a little bit. So with that said, I will now go back to the script. Tonight, council has invited Dial Realty Development to present a concept proposal for a senior housing project on the Indian Hills train station parking lot. And our new community development director, Scott Mangum, is here to introduce.
Thank you, President Rents and village council. First of all, thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm excited to be here and get to work in Winnetka. It's been a great first week, and really excited to be here. President Rents set it up very well, and I know the development team has some additional slides here that they're going to present. I won't steal too much of their thunder. But again, this is a concept review. Stephen Held is here from Dial Realty to discuss this and introduce the rest of his team, including his architects. He'll discuss it. Again, it was set up very well. I think the only other thing I would add that's in the staff memo is that in the comprehensive plan, this site was identified as an opportunity site. It is a surface parking lot currently, and so it was one of the sites identified as potential for redevelopment within the next 20 years. So that's another reason why we're taking a look at this site. And again, interested in getting any kind of feedback from the public and from the village council this evening. Thank you.
Hello, village council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present this exciting vision for the redevelopment of the Indian Hill Metro Station and adjacent service parking lot. My name is Stephen Held, and I represent Dial Realty Dial Senior Living, a family owned developer, owner, and operator of senior living communities across the Midwest. Currently, we operate more than 35 communities, including two in the Chicagoland area, the Landings in Batavia and Deer Park Village in Deer Park. We are eager to continue expanding our footprint in and around Chicago, which brings us to the purpose of today's presentation, our proposal for a senior living community at the Indian Hill Metro Station. Winnetka is a highly desirable location for many reasons, and we've had our eye on this specific site for several years. Our interest dates back to 2019, when we began discussions with Union Pacific, the current owner, as Chris mentioned, of the one, I don't know, one quarter, one third of the land at the site. So it's the it's the pink shaded area up on the screen, and then the yellow is village-owned. Actually, at first, when we started discussions with UP, they they what they presented was that they owned all of it. We came to find out that, and Rob sent us information, that there was a deed from like, I don't know, 1950 or something, with the predecessor of UP. So obviously, a lot of learning kind of throughout this. But yeah, Union Pacific owns a significant amount of real estate along three of Metro's 11 lines, the north, the northwest, and the west line. So we have a good working relationship with UP. Both of our organizations are based in Omaha, Nebraska, and they have expressed a willingness to sell their portion of the site for development contingent upon the village's support. We fully recognize the significance of this location to the community, and any potential development would be designed to preserve essential functions such as metro commuter parking and student parking for New Trier Township High School. We introduced our concept to the village staff in January, and they recommended that we kind of begin this process in this forum prior to submitting any formal application. I'm joined today by our architectural partner, BKV Group, Chris, Mark, and Sylvia. And I'd now like to, I'm going to turn it over to Chris from BKV. He's going to walk you through our initial site plans and design concepts. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Good evening, trustees. My name is Chris Pelkovich. I am a senior design leader and partner with BKV Group. We're a 47-year-old architecture and engineering firm with an office in Chicago, a few additional national offices as well beyond that. So excited for the opportunity this evening. Going to bring us back one slide here to start. The the site is here in the in the red. Let's see, I've got a pointer here. It is it's currently zoned for multifamily residential. Just kind of want to point that out. It's just a first piece, that there's there's some expectation of some density on the site, and it's obviously to be to be discussed and negotiated as this goes on. I think this the the land ownership's been handled quite well here. And then just an aerial shot is this next one of just kind of, you know, reminding anyone that that needs a reminder of kind of the overall feel of the site. I think one of the interesting pieces architecturally is just the impact of the elevated tracks, that they're roughly 13 feet above the the parking surface. So that just has just an impact on feel, on where barriers are, or just how open different portions of the site feel as well. We'll point that out as we develop it a little bit more here. We've got a bird's eye view here that we're looking at, looking at the project. And what we've really done is looked at, break it into the feel of two buildings overall. The the north building, or the on the left side of the screen here, is the memory care and assisted living building here. We have a public plaza right in the center that is going to reconnect up to the train, up to the covered train station area at that point, or train platform, excuse me. And we have got more more images of that, that I think we've done a nice job to think of as a team, to really try to enhance the enhance this as a public amenity. And then on the the right side, or the south side, coming up at Green Bay here, along Green Bay, we have a four-story independent living portion of the building as well. And just for for unit counts here, the memory care has 26 units, the assisted living has 65, and the independent living has 82, for a total of 173 units between the two the two buildings. As we look at the site plan overall, we try to take some care in thinking through some of the adjacencies that we have overall. We're going to start in the center at the public plaza portion. And back to what I brought up earlier of that that 13-foot difference in height, what we've we selected to do, and we've got a section of this coming up, is we put the public plaza up basically at the at the train platform height, at the 13 feet up. And you'll see some more additional images, but we have a grand stair coming right off of here with a station drop-off point identified right here on Green Bay Road. And we have public elevators located here as well. And these public elevators will also provide access down to the below-grade parking, that we have public parking as a portion of this that will show a little bit more. Speaking to the parking, on the on the north side, we do have a public parking entry at this point here. And on the the south side, we have a resident and staff parking entry point right at this location here. And we split those to limit the amount of traffic on the different sides. And I will point out that the senior living is a use that has a very limited amount of traffic impact typically. As we've been doing this as BKV for a number of years, and been through a number of different seen seen a number of parking studies and traffic studies on it. And really, what you find is particularly the independent living side that are still driving, that they're being selective to to drive at times when the streets are a little easier to drive down, that they're not choosing to go at rush hour all that often. Additional couple elements of this, going deeper into the site, we have a courtyard on each side. The this would be on the the north side would be the memory care courtyard here. So this would be a secure a secure courtyard for for those residents that are needing the some additional additional care. And then we'd have a independent living courtyard on this side, and we'd look to create some terrace landscaping as well along the berm to just beautify beautify the views overall for the residents themselves in this instance. And then one last little piece on here as well, is we do have a an outdoor amenity space on the fourth floor for the assisted living residents as well. And you'll see that a little bit more as we continue through. I'll go back one for just to point that out here, and that's that's up here. This is, you know, we haven't developed the exteriors at this point. Later on in the presentation, we just have a few architectural visioning ideas to be discussed. But this is just a rough massing overall, just kind of from the southwest corner here. You can see see the bridge and the train line, how it's coming through here. Getting into the floor plans here, the we have two levels of below-grade parking right now. The 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 lower level of, let me, I'll just talk to the numbers first, actually. So so we have 120 resident or staff stalls here. And additionally, we have, and this is to be discussed a bit more, we we're showing 329 potential public parking stalls. There are approximately 200 existing public parking stalls currently on the site right now. So we're looking to at least replace that at one-to-one. And we've, you know, studied it to potentially develop more, as we've heard the high school has a need for more parking. So this could be an opportunity for that need. The the upper level of parking labeled as B1, you can see the the wall really down the middle here. So the right-hand side is the resident parking, and here is their ramp up and out. And then the left-hand side has a ramp that goes to this P1 level for the public parking side, but then continues down to the P2 level. And the entire P2 level is public parking as well. And then the the elevators right here, these pair of elevators are the ones that go up to street level or to the train level plaza as well. A little bit into the the first floor plan, we've really tried to think about creating active uses at kind of some of the key points here. So at the at the street level, heading up to the train, the train level plaza, we have our main lobby at this point here, and we have it flanked with amenity spaces on on each side and our leasing office. And here are those elevators that I mentioned previously. And then over at the main corner, we would utilize this corner as amenity space so that there'd be, although not retail use in here, we we look at it as, you know, spaces that would be active and having our our resident community members in there and keeping it active. And then the same over on the north side as well. So each of the corners being intentional to have some activity. And then one other piece that we've done is we've we've tucked our kitchen in below the the train platform area, or the train platform plaza, excuse me. And we've we have a building link going just in front of it that we you can see the subtle recesses in here, and this is very preliminary, but we're thinking of those as you'd have a glassy wall across here, and you could have art in those. And those could be, you know, just kind of lit and be be kind of nice expressions to just kind of add to the the public realm in that instance. Moving up the building a little more, second floor, second, third, and fourth floor on the left side are assisted living, and second, third, and fourth floor on the right side are independent living. You're seeing up at the at level two here, the the plaza is equal to the floor levels here, and then it's coming right up to the the train platform. And this is the section that you can really, really see that kind of 13-foot difference and how we thought about, you know, kind of creating something that that is easily navigable, but also creates a really nice presence overall. So the the parking below, here's the that area that I talked about, that that link walkthrough area with some of our spaces underneath, and then coming right out at the tracks. This is one of the views as we're up at a bird's eye a little bit. A grand stair coming up here would be the corner where our lobby of this would be of our community here. Here's the image of the public elevators on this side, and then just kind of seeing up to the plaza level and the the tracks beyond. And then here's the the link as well that I'd mentioned. And just another view when you're actually standing up up in the plaza itself. And I'd mentioned that that fourth floor, there's indoor and outdoor amenity space for the assisted living, and that that's what you're seeing, some of the trellis at this point right here. The architectural visioning right now is is a bit open for discussion, but what we're looking for is just the idea of traditional elegance, that the city has got, or the village has got a very nice mix of architectural vernacular. I mean, obviously, we're seeing heavily leaning some ways versus others. And as we get to this corner, it it becomes a little bit more open, and we felt like opportunity for what the architecture could feel like. But some of the key features that we're really thinking about is, particularly, I'll point out this bottom right image, how it has a very clear, strong base to it, that it that is reminiscent of retail-type spaces overall. And we designed something of the similar to kind of continue the walkable feel of that area, and to mimic some of the other areas that we see in the village. It's got a solid middle section here, and then there's a difference or variation at the top in some of these, whether it be having a mansard roof, or this is stepped back in this instance, or or the top-left image where it's using pitched roofs, and then kind of a gable expression here, but then a slight step back for a different materiality to just change some of the feel and just continue some of that variation. And some of the variation, I think, feels really nice as a pedestrian, but it also helps break down the scale and and height and feel of the height of an overall project. And then very lastly, we haven't designed the community plaza. We'd certainly want a lot of feedback on that, but we just wanted to share a couple of visioning images that we really think of it as a high-quality space and an amenity for the community overall. So with that, thank you very much. Stephen, do you want to say anything in closing?
Just that, you know, this is kind of, you know, we want this to be an open dialogue. So I think we'll kind of leave it at that and open it up to to conversation.
Sure. Well, thank you, Stephen. All right, guys, what do you think?
Can I just have us review what the parameters of are of the current zoning of B2?
Sure.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Scott. I meant to take a look at it before coming to the meeting, but it might be helpful. You know, what are the height limits? That sort of thing. Or maybe Anne? It's a two-and-a-half story? 35 feet? Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. That's for B2, right. For that's, so that's the existing zoning. Okay.
Don't be shy.
The follow-up question was, what was the height of this building proposed?
Four stories.
Four stories, which is, yeah. So how many feet is that?
45 feet, if they showed on there.
Yeah, give or take.
It's a PD.
No, I get that. And I did get in the materials about suggesting other ways around. I guess I'll jump in. Full disclosure, I done, when I was in private practice, I did a lot of work with continuing care communities, which I think this would be classified, although I'm not sure if this would be a lifetime contract, or would this be more leasing? Yeah, it might be helpful, just so people can understand.
Dial has only ever done private pay leasing. We haven't gotten into the the membership fee or the what.
Continuing care contract.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So we, that would be our plan here. I wouldn't say 100%, but that's kind of where we're going with this.
Okay. Developed with the Claire, worked on the Claire downtown for Presbyterian, you know, in different Presbyterian, Friendship Village, and Schaumburg. So those are some of the projects I worked on. So know a little bit about this, although not as familiar. Most of those projects were developed as life care contract places. But, you know, I'm pleased to see a proposal come in for this site. I know it's going to be controversial, and I know change, but I do think I like the idea of having memory care, independent living and assisted care. It makes sense to me. I think it's a thoughtful design. I'd like to see some softening at the corner of, let's see, Winnetka and Green Bay. I think that's hard, and I know you're just showing a massing there, but I do think that can be a difficult corner with high school drivers. There's a bus stop there somewhere north of the intersection. I'm sure you guys took a look at that. And I guess I like the idea of the resident parking. And I, I guess I like the idea of the resident parking being on Winnetka Avenue versus having that access point be for students, because I think that all the data does show that senior residents do typically avoid the 7:00 to 8:00 AM or 9:00 AM and try to go at off-peak times, so I think that was thoughtful. You know, I kind of like the idea. I don't know what other people think, though.
Well, I have one question to start. The packet says that Dial has established a relationship with Union Pacific Railroad, and then I think you, you, when, in your presentation, you just said, "Your conversations with them have indicated they are open to selling." So, I guess maybe I'd like to have a better understanding of specifically where you stand, or if it's Union Pacific is open to selling to anyone.
Sure. So, we actually had that portion that was UP-owned under contract for, shoot, two or three years. We were pursuing, we were looking at quite a few sites with them, and so I, I think we met with, with staff, I think it was in '21, but we felt like, you know, we put a hold on that and kind of rehash that at a future date. What we, what we learned through dialogue with a lot of the communities was, you know, it's up to you guys if you want to do something. In most cases, the UP land in and of itself is not developable. It requires adjacent land, which is typically owned by the village or Metra, that sort of thing. So, we are currently not under contract. I would say we have a very good relationship with UP. I think I'm not concerned about not having it under contract. I could get it under contract tomorrow. But, you know, if you guys want to do something, we can move forward with that, but it's, it's really up to you. I mean, you have zoning that, you know, you have a lot of cards that you can play where, you know, we, we don't, we don't have a lot with just the UP ground. Does that answer your question?
Pretty much, yeah, okay.
And to follow that up, have you done other projects along the, the UP line, is what I was wondering with your relationship with them?
No, not, not, not at the current moment.
Okay, well, I have a couple.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna stay on that, on that property line, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, go on.
It's a long, I don't want, you can take it over again. That is, I remember looking at this before, it was the most arbitrary property line I've ever seen. It's, it's like somebody who had a, a few, a few cocktails and just went out and started drawing.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Oh. Let me put it up. Can you, is it working? Okay. So, that, we've had that discussion on that property. Have we had discussions with UP? I think we have, on that property in general?
So, as-
To buy it.
As President Rince noted, before the pandemic-
Right, I remember we-
-we were interested in the property-
I remember those discussions.
And we weren't getting much of a response from UP.
They weren't serious.
And then several, you know, just a few months later, we learned that they had entered into contracts on their property up and down the rail line without a whole lot of notice. And that's, and then subsequent to that, we provided UP and the contractor, contractor information about who owns what-
Right.
And understanding that a lot of this is not developable without, you know, village participation.
Okay.
You know, because they looked at Hubbard Woods, they looked at Elm Street, there isn't a whole lot that could be done there.
There's nothing there, right.
But Indian Hill obviously had more open space. But the village, while we had those discussions, the pandemic certainly interrupted it, but we didn't pursue it. There wasn't anything really to pursue until they just came back recently, saying if there was an opportunity-
And that's always been so multi-family residential? I don't know why it struck me as odd. That's always been zoned that? Is there ever a switch? Okay.
Instead of like retail or whatever along the Green Bay corridor?
It was residential as far as we know.
Okay.
As noted in the staff report.
Okay. Go ahead, Kim, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I, I'm gonna step back even from the whole concept here with a couple questions, thoughts. I, I mean, I certainly recognize across the whole country, as the population ages, there's a need for these kind of facilities. I personally just went through the process six months ago to find a independent living facility for my 90-year-old mother. So, I, I did tour and I'm familiar with a lot of what's available on the North Shore. Certainly never enough, so, you know, I, I get that that's a role. I, I, when I look at that, though, I, as Chris mentioned, that there's, you know, we hear that there's a need for people who want to stay in Winnetka as they age or age in place. My experience from caucus surveys or, you know, everything, caucus surveys to cocktail parties to book groups, whatever, is, I'm hearing the biggest need right now are for people who are empty nesters, who want to downsize from their large homes where they raised their family to something more modest, either because they have a second home somewhere else, they don't want the maintenance or the taxes of a large property, that that's sort of one of the biggest issues. I hear that from my friends who are real estate agents, and we have one right here. So, so given that, I guess I would say when we look at what the few parcels of land we have to develop in town, what is the most important need? Granted, we've had caucus surveys, I'm mentioning anecdotal, but we don't really have a lot of information that this is the most burning need right now versus potentially other ones. So, I, I would, I, even just on that basis alone, I'd be hesitant to sort of really push on, push forward on this concept right now. I thank you for this presentation. It looks like a lovely design. Again, having just gone through this with my mom, the number of stairs and, to me, seems not like a nice, well-balanced design for the population that would be there, that the courtyards are sort of small, that the property wouldn't be really fully utilized by the residents. I also have to be honest, having, I love the number of parking spots, but I have to be honest, knowing my mom and other people, having 200 and something high schoolers going in and out of the parking garage, well, might prompt lots of complaints, and even putting 200 teenagers underground in a parking garage- [laughter] -when we already work on managing the quote, "smoking corner," might not be the wisest choice for, you know, the community. Let's be honest, teenagers will be teenagers, as, as good as they might be. So, just on a, a real top level, I, I do have some concerns that we're just maybe not ready to make a decision to pursue this one way or the other until we have more information.
I think that's a really good question about demographics, because I think you're saying you're kind of questioning the need for assisted and skilled or memory care? Is that what I'm hearing?
Just over perhaps another need of-
Independent.
Not even independent, more, I'm gonna call it empty nester housing, transitional housing. People from, yeah, townhouses-
Yeah.
-condos, et cetera, where they're not, people aren't necessarily ready to have the full services of, of an organization like this.
I'm, I'm curious, has the developer, I mean, typically, there's demographic studies that, have you done any of those? And maybe they have information on that? Because I think one of the things, when I worked in the industry, and I see this in Winnetka, is we have what we would call naturally occurring senior facilities, the muse, the chimneys.
My mom used to live in the condo association across from Nutria West.
Right.
And she made friends with like 10 widows there. They just sort of naturally-
Right.
-in some ways more.
And then the concern becomes, some people are living independently much longer than they should, right? And I think we've all seen that, we've known that. The person who I bought my house from, a week after I bought the house, the police were at my doorstep because there was a hit and run. And so, you know, so I wonder if there's been any demographic information of, do we need empty nester, or do we have a lot of late 70s, early 80s that maybe need this level of care, which I think is a really good point, of whether it's just, you know, condos, or if it's more of a care facility or care option? I don't know if you have any information.
They might need it, but we, there are many within a few miles that in our small village with our limited land, is this-
Yeah.
So, I don't deny that this is needed-
Yeah.
-in the area. It's whether it's the best thing for us.
Yeah. I think, oh, yeah, I was curious if they have any, you know, demographic or market information.
So, we're obviously very early, early on in this process. You know, from, from how, how long we've been doing this, you get a sense of, you know, what a good site looks like, you know, the area, the community. We feel like this definitely checks all the boxes. You know, what we found with a lot of our developments early on in our business was we would, we would go to the fringe of towns, build on, you know, cornfield land, you're isolating your, your senior living, you're having to create all these amenities because you're isolated. And, you know, what we found in, in, in doing, starting to do infill development, is that there's much more demand, the seniors want to be close to the action, and for the loved ones that are going to visit them, now they have, you know, especially in this case, you're immediately across from retail. You know, if there's a restaurant across the street, you can actually pick up your mom or dad and, and walk across the street with them. We want, we want senior living to be in areas like this.
Where's the restaurant?
Well, maybe there's not a restaurant yet, but, but-
There's a restaurant and coffee shop.
The intent, yeah.
You live down there, you should know.
And, and then-
Boye.
Come on.
From the standpoint of the, the right mix, I, I think we would do the study and we would find out, and, you know, we can certainly do more independent living, less assisted living and memory care. I mean, we could do all independent living. I mean, it's not, we're not ruling out anything. This is an initial proposal to kind of start the dialogue. This is typically what we do. This is our, our, you know, standard operating model, but we, we can deviate based on demographics.
I was gonna just pop in with what Kim was saying. I, my initial thought was, when I, when I think about what people are asking for, it is the empty nesters. It's not, I, I, not necessarily this. This, I think the pictures look neat. When I looked at it, one of the pictures in the back, it looks really a lot bigger than it does from the overhead shot, and it seemed kind of like a, a heavy use of this corner. But in general, when Kim said that about what is it that people are looking for, I do think that it's like the Walden, the, you know, the muse, like townhouses or something like that, more than that everybody's looking for this kind of facility. It's just, it's a heavy use. I know there would be a lot of traffic involved with people taking trips, people visiting, ambulances, paramedics, whatever. It's a pretty intense corner. I live right near there, and there's multiple times a day when it's impassable for periods of time, but-
That, that's what I've heard, too, that, that it is a corner, it did look a, a lot of mass. And I, my mother lived in the Mather, she lived down in the city, and, and my mother-in-law lives in Pleasant in California, and it's a two-story, kind of looks a little bit like that with courtyards and kind of a little walking area, but it was, it's not up against train tracks and a very busy road. And so, that, my, my concern, and I've heard from the neighbors also, was the, the mass and, and activity this will bring to a pretty busy corner, as you just talked about already. You know, I just kind of look at the traits of what a, a really good senior home is, walking across Green Bay Road is no picnic. At my, anybody, for a child, for a Nutria, for a Nutria high schooler, I mean, it's a little Russian roulette there, so I'm not sure it's a bucolic place to have that, but the mass kind of got me, if we need, do we need four, if we're gonna have, whether it's empty nester or something else. And the Mather is, what, eight stories, but it's-
They need at least, actually, just so you know, I-
That's why I was wondering, the math, the math had to work.
Multiple times, because they were really interested in coming to Winnetka. I originally talked to them about the, the community house parking lot is potentially going there. That's when we understood that they need about 10 stories on a smaller footprint. They looked at one Winnetka, and that site, they said they would need at least 12 stories to make their model work, so, which makes sense. I mean, you know, you, you need that sort of critical mass to fuel tho- those sort of services, especially at the level they deliver them at. You can't do that for 10 people for cheap.
And that's a life care contract model.
Right, right. It's a different model altogether.
So, it's a model, you know, where when you move in, they're guaranteeing that they'll take care of you for life, and there's different-
And the one thing, I, I did want to respond to, to Bridget, because I know you're, you're bringing your experience as a, as a Realtor here in town to that statement, but I don't think Realtors see people looking for that next stage of their life.
I have helped people.
Oh, you have?
I have. I've gone over in Glenview and Northbrook-
Well, that's good.
-to the pages where you could, yeah.
Indoor people, indoor people that are selling their homes and moving-
Those, right.
Right.
But a lot of those places have a much bigger, flatter, like interior courtyards, huge parking lots outside, so people aren't going up and down to, to get from the cars to where they're going, because there's a lot of staff involved, there's trucks that bring in the food for the kitchens and all of that.
Yeah, I know. I developed those, and they're not as bad as you think, I'll say that, just so you don't create fear mongering amongst the rest.
You asked me a question. You said, "Do I have any experience?" And I do.
I'm just saying that the point I was trying to make, Bridget, was number one, typically when people are looking for these sort of facilities, they aren't going to, to real estate offices, they're driving around with their family, and they're getting out the internet and trying to see what happens there. I would be surprised if that was a standard way of finding housing for this population. Secondly, with respect to the busyness and stuff, and this is just practical knowledge, look at, I don't have any dog in this fight, and in three weeks, you won't even hear from me again, okay? But, but understand, I mean, the facilities that I've developed, one out on Willow Road, on Palatine Road, right at Route 83, you drive right over the flyover and look through the windows. The thing was, was pre-leased to 80% before we even opened the doors. The one we opened out on Lake Street, the same thing, this is Lake Street out in Bloomingdale. Six lanes, 50 miles an hour, there's probably five facilities along Lake Street from Route 53 out to Bloomingdale, and they're all full.
Okay, I would say those are very different communities than-
But I guess all that I'm saying is that the, is the need is there, and the facilities tolerate difficult sites, and that's probably what you've run into, too, that you, you can go out and get those challenging sites and still make them work, because the population is contained within the, the development typically, most of the time. They're not running around, taking long walks out into the beach and things of this nature. It's, it's, it's pretty, it's more of a closed community than one would think when you get to, to this level. That said, I tend to agree with you that, that maybe the town isn't ready for any sort of assisted living sort of arrangements, maybe, you know, independent living or empty nesty living, but I think we're missing a huge need in the community, because there are a lot of elderly people. I hear it all the time. Where am I gonna go? They can't go to a condo, because that's where they're already at. So, there is a need, you know, and clearly, with the Silver tsunami, there's a need, you could just take a dartboard and throw it anywhere in a map, and you'd probably hit a, a census tract that needed this, this sort of services. So, I don't think it's a matter of need, but I think you do bring up a good point relative to community perception and density, which are both-
Right.
-something that I think people would have to get their head wrapped around. Now, as a developer, I look at it and say, "We could go 10 stories here," and I don't think a lot of people would be adversely affected when the whole thing was done. Okay? And I'm, and, and the only thing I mean is that, is that, is that you really have no adjacent neighbors. Yes, you have people across the street, I know chimneys, I know all about where you're at, and I've spent a lot of time down there looking at it. But you could go to a fairly tall building, and it wouldn't adversely impact generally the area because of the fact that you're backed up to a, a park, a railroad tracks, and you got nothing to the north and south of this, so-
Well, I, my first reaction, building on what Rob said, though, is I wrote the word looming. I feel like that it's right at the street level, four stories tall. Here, we've been trying to work to sort of revitalize-
Oh, I agree.
-Indian Hill District.
Right.
We've got Tele Coffee and Aboye and Plunkets, and make it where people actually would, more would go. And now, all of a sudden, we would put this four-story building right at the sidewalk level with, that just kills any sort of-
Yeah. So, I agree.
-browsing-
We have such little open space right now, yeah.
Yeah, so, that, I wrote looming was the first thing. I actually, before I even saw this, I assumed it would go the other way with the, the back of the building closer to the tracks where it went down with, with a more open area at the Green Bay front, and so, you know, obviously, I hadn't seen anything. So, again, my first thought was looming, as you would-
Yeah. Pulling it up close to the street does definitely- Yeah, pulling it up close to the street does definitely create a lot of problems in that corridor.
And sort of, to me, it sort of kills the, the rhythm of what we were trying to create at that corner or in that, in that area.
All the way to Kennelworth.
I don't think it's a real pedestrian area though. I mean.
I guess I'm saying we were trying.
Okay, so there's 3,000 high school students and hundreds of teachers that are walking back and forth across.
No, no, no. I get it, but it's.
The street every day.
No, I know and I've had my kids there too and I've, you know, had one have a car accident there. I mean, I'm really well-versed in that intersection. But I, I think, and maybe, you know, we can talk about, I, I mean, maybe we should break it down to, do we think density belongs there? Because whether it's condos, apartments or something, this is one of the last places we have for a residential, whatever type of residential development. And I will say, it's hard to get, we have a real big parking need. I keep harping on this because every day I leave working out and I come up to get some coffee at Tala and I see these carloads of kids, you know, taking the parking ticket, taking up all the business parking, you know, what is that? That's south of Winnetka on Green Bay Road. I think there's a real parking problem with Nutria for the staff, the teachers and then, you know, the students. This is an interesting opportunity, understanding there's neighborhood concerns about density, to actually do something to solve the parking there, create more parking so you take some pressure off the businesses that are struggling and we hear about it. Like you go, if you try to go at Tala at like 8:30, a lot of that parking is parked up already. I don't know if they are having a problem, but I've noticed like going to, there's the pizza place, right? You can, at certain times of the day, there's challenges on parking. I think it's an interesting idea to talk about density at that corner because, you know, you're gonna have to solve some parking issues and to go down two stories in a parking garage or more is gonna require some density just financially. I mean, that's just the reality of the development cost.
You're right. It's a tough one because this community, I think in theory it's great, but there's so little, you know, we have so little open space that we control anymore. It changes, I mean, in another community, it's a no-brainer. There's so little open space. If you look at, I mean, Bob, you and I were talking about, look at the caucus surveys, people are looking for more open space and not, they're not worried about filling up in density right now. They're looking for more open space and what can we do with that could be more creative? And that's, that's the tough part. This is just a very unusual community with very, very limited space.
But is it better to just have surface parking that's underutilized?
I'm not saying that's the right thing either.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No.
These are hard questions. Okay, Kirk.
Just a thought. It would be helpful regarding the use. I'm assuming there's data out there and I'm looking at community development. If we could evaluate, what is the, whatever, the economic impact of senior, independent, assisted living versus non-age restricted? Because I think, I mean, along with this, not only property taxes, but sales tax dollars, what's the economic impact of the community? And if the village is contributing land and we're, exchanged for property tax revenue or, you know, additional parking, whatever the, you know, the agreement is, I think we should understand if this is the type of use that we're going to approve, how does that compare to other types of uses that we might consider at this site?
And just to clarify, that's another option because we're doing Dell webs, which are age restricted, not healthcare at all, that are vertical, right? So that is an age restriction component that would not necessarily be this kind of rental care model, right?
Fifty-five and better.
Fifty-five and older, yeah. When you only have to have 85% of the residents, one resident has to be 55 or older, which is me.
But I was just.
Sorry.
I made the point that there are some communities that naturally evolve into that, that it doesn't have to be a specific age to make a Dell web, it just evolves into that.
Something else to think about, we're talking about the need for folks within town to want to age in place within the community. I'm guessing there's a strong demand that could be there for people that already live in the community that want their parents closer to them.
Right.
I mean, I, I agree with all the comments about the demand quotient.
Or further away in some.
Right. But it's like, I mean, think about it, like a young family that's here to stay for decades and as, you know, the older generation, it's like, okay, where are they gonna live to get closer to family once they retire? I'm assuming that it's gonna be the grandparents that are gonna move closer to the kids than vice versa. And this could open the door for really, you know, increasing, whatever, the benefit of living in this community to bring families closer.
That's a really good point. I mean, my parents moved into a continuing care facility in Naples, Florida largely because there wasn't really anything equivalent here. I would have moved them here.
All right, I gotta put on my old DRB hat. I have, I have thoughts I would love to share with the development and design team. So here's my reaction. I'm seeing this for the first time. And full disclosure, I know the architect fairly well, so I'm not gonna get too personal, but I, I would, I personally am intrigued by the, the concept and the population served. I do think that the design isn't necessarily appropriate in terms of the massing for this location. I agree with the comments made that my assumption walking in here that the density would have been pushed up against the tracks. And I'll maybe start from the outside looking in. I would encourage, if this is a, a path that developer wants to pursue and the village wants to entertain it, is to start from the, the hard topics first, which is the engineering. And if you want to experience the site, go there on any weekday morning at 8:00 AM and you will see how crazy this intersection is for about 20 minutes. And I, my, my guess is, after you experience not only the traffic, the pedestrian traffic, but also really try to think about the, the feel, the contextual feel. What you laid out is a, a very urban feel, right, where you come up to the sidewalk. If you just go on the other side of the street, it has, even though it's a high-traffic corridor, it has a very suburban feel to it. Even though I think wherever the, that building in the opposite corner of Winnetka in Green Bay is, is that a three or a four story? But it's, it only hits the corner at, the corner of that building, so it's not as strong feeling. But I would say the rest of that corridor and even going down Kennelworth is very suburban feeling. And I would encourage you to consider concepts that flip, like it was suggested, flip orientation, push the density up against the tracks. I think in reality is folks would rather be in a courtyard facing west, towards the street, even though there's, it's a busy street and if it's elevated, I think there's more opportunity to create an engaging, whatever, public space if you're fronting the street versus the tracks. Facing east to the tracks isn't gonna get a lot of attention, maybe even from residents. I would say the other thing I would, back on the engineering, look at your traffic counts, traffic flow. If, if we're being serious considering this, I would expect from the public standpoint, a much more predominant loading, unloading zone for the train station and create that a prominent focal point, not only allowing taxis, you know, kiss and ride, whatever, all the, the different aspects, but allow, right now, I mean, this, I know it's concept, but you know, there's allowing for two or three cars to stack, which won't work. I would encourage you to really add a lot of flexibility to have at, you know, traffic points and maybe, I'm not sure if there's an engineering study that could be done to analyze what is the demand for drop-offs and pickups. I would also, the comment was made about folks entering a parking garage. My mother is one of probably many that avoids parking garages at all costs. And I think if, whether it's someone coming to visit, whether it's a visitor, whether it's a delivery, you name it, there's gonna be a significant demand, I'm assuming, for on-street or just off-street, easy access, in-and-out, short-term parking. I, I think it's a good idea to push, if you've got the public parking at the north end, but just your plan, I know its concept is very tight to get in and out and I'm assuming that it'd probably have to be signaled because you're gonna have literally hundreds of people at, you know, within 15, 20 minutes trying to get in and out of there. I, I personally don't mind higher density. I don't mind higher height. If it's pushed up against track, I think there's a way you can stack it, you can step it back. There's so many tricks on the trade that the architect could employ, but I would say, it's a great introduction concept, but I would say, the way it's presented right now, I would, I would say there's a lot to be desired about just the layout and I think part of it's just contextual without really experiencing that intersection in this neighborhood and try to reinforce and create this as a, an extension of that Kennelworth-Winetka corridor. And maybe that should be a part of the discussion is what is that streetscape master plan? And extend it further north to that north end of the site and try to integrate this building as a part of that master plan corridor. And I could go on and on, but I think that's probably the high-level points. But I think it's a great first start. I love the idea of trying to do something here. I think the benefit could benefit from this significantly. I think the businesses down this corridor could benefit creating this more walkable community, increasing sales tax revenue, property tax revenue for the village, additional parking, all of those benefits. So I'd be in support of something happening. Thank you.
Can I just respond?
Sure, come on up.
Please.
And then you, Bob.
We're totally agnostic to, we, we contemplated flipping the buildings as a, you know, and then from a, from a traffic standpoint, you could potentially then open it up to a pickup and drop-off within the courtyard since you flipped it. So, I mean, we're totally agnostic to, to that and this is just a starting point. And, you know, we're, all, all of your thoughts are great and I, I think, I think they can be incorporated, so, yeah.
First off, I think that, just like we appreciate Chase Bank and Murphy Development, I think just to have a developer come in and sort of try to plant their flag in Winnetka with a very large capital commitment, thank you for even considering Winnetka. I think that's really commendable. We appreciate that. You know, like a lot of people around the table here, you know, I've had relatives live their final days at the Mather, live their final days at Press Homes and in full disclosure, I do serve on the board of Presbyterian Homes. Now Presbyterian Living is the name of the organization. But this is, I have no question that there's a demand for this service. I mean, I, whether it is the demand that should be on that property, you know, to be debated, but there is a demand for this service. We see it all the time. Some of the communities we're all familiar with, I think, have just a more open feeling than this one, generally speaking. If you go down to Westminster and Evanston, there's walking. Go up to Lake Forest Place, there's walking, you know, there's open land and so on. This initially, at least look at it, did look a little bit like we're trying to get a lot into this space. It struck me. And I'm not sure, I was looking at the one diagram here that shows the, the layout from up above. I don't really see the circulation pattern for public safety, fire code, I don't know. Rob, if you have a, you want.
We haven't even started.
So I'm not even sure, is it, is there a circulation around here that a fire truck could get into or, I don't know.
You have to get that all figured out.
You have to figure that out. So, I mean, I think that gets to the fact that we're getting a lot of building into this location. I have a lot of sympathy for this use, I have a lot of sympathy for townhomes and transition homes for empty nesters. So, you know, I do appreciate that we're opening up the conversation to this, you know, this particular plan, I think that we probably have some neighbors here, you know, we've talked about, we had some stormwater study in this area that we're kind of scratching our heads, how do we even deal with stormwater in this area? You know, with a ditch and we're gonna have more pumps and this and that down there, right?
You dig a big hole, then you solve the problem, right?
You dig a big hole, big hole. But, so there are a lot of issues here. You've talked about the traffic. You know, I don't know, is that, is that, are we coming off a sunset here to, with the kids? Is that how we're entering this location?
I was just thinking about that because there's that light at sunset and that they're not showing that as part of their orientation.
It doesn't go through.
No.
It doesn't go under the tracks.
So what, are we doing a curb cut?
No, no, no. I'm just saying that the, they, their building doesn't.
How are we getting off of Green Bay?
Yeah. That was one of the questions.
It'd have to be sunset, I guess. Is that how you're accessing the north parking garage where that light is right now?
No, they were showing it off of Green Bay before sunset, I thought.
Wow.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Okay, so there's a new.
So there could be the way to integrate.
You could combine the curb cut.
Yeah.
Okay.
You could certainly combine the curb cut.
Okay.
Make it safer.
You're early on this, but I guess for me, bottom line, it's just a lot of mass in this particular location and, you know, maybe there are ways to deal with that. I, I'm interested in what some of the neighbors have to say tonight because they might have some different perspectives.
Yeah.
One thing I want to say about the uses is, and obviously I'm biased, I'm in senior living, but we have done other uses before, you know, Dial's done a lot of retail, multifamily. This is far and away the least intensive use from a traffic perspective. You are gonna need density to make something happen on this site. So, I mean, if you wanted to do retail, you couldn't do it alone. I can tell you, retail's not gonna work here. There's way too much retail already. If you did multi, if you wanted to retail, you'd have to do multifamily above. That's even more controversial, requires even more parking. Townhouses, again, you, you don't have enough density to make it work. So I, I think when you start to narrow down what could actually go here, there, there's not many uses that could, you know, support the cost to make it happen. Senior Living's probably the only one from a property tax standpoint. You're probably gonna produce more property tax than you would multifamily and you don't have a burden on the school system and it's, it's very, it's the, it's the least intensive from a, a parking requirement standpoint, so.
Of your 35 communities in Crete, you may have an opinion on this. How would, just conceptually, I know we're, we're just talking 30,000 feet up here, but how would you envision the ownership of the property being handled? Are we talking about a ground lease of some sort? Are we talking about selling the property to Dial? What?
I, I think there would be a sale and then there would be a condo-ing of stalls for the public versus the private, that sort of thing. And I mean, again, I mean, we're very early on.
So it'd be a sale of the property and then there'd be a public benefit, basically.
Yeah, or a trade.
Yeah, okay.
The one thing we.
Go ahead.
Well, sort of along that line, if this is village land that we would be selling and/or selling because we knew how it was going to be developed, do we have an obligation to ask other firms to come to us with concepts? I would think so. Or even if you don't have an obligation, do we have a, I'll say, a, a duty or responsibility of the community to get multiple concepts and ideas?
And you could push an RFP out, there's no doubt about it. I mean, that's, and that's one process.
Not on the U.P.
Well, that, and that's, and that's the problem we came up to when I started talking about this 10 years ago was that with, we only have a third of the property. If you look at the, the overlay map, wherever that is, there just isn't enough to do anything unless you combine the two properties. So, and, and the real trick to the.
Back to my earlier question, that it's not that Dial necessarily has this property.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody could, sounds like, could get the property under contract.
Well, I, I, I will tell you, I don't, I'm not gonna debate this, but we tried. We wanted to buy the property. Had made it clear to the, to U.P. for years and years that we were desirous of this property and they decided to couple up with somebody who would be interested in all the properties. Obviously their strategy didn't work out too good because a lot of them ended up just like this, right? I mean, where you've got pieces.
Yeah, their property is not developable, but at the same time, you need their property, property to develop anything.
Right.
They had, that's their only trump card, but it's, yeah, it's an important one.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, that's always been the, the real challenge is, is that in order for this to be worthwhile, and the other issue that you have is you have 212 spaces, give or take, there now. If you were to replicate the parking, that alone is $10 million. It's 50 grand a space. I mean, that, and I don't think there's $10 million worth of purchase price for this land, for, for, for a development of this size. Maybe? You're getting close to no deal on it at, at 10 million bucks though, so. There's a lot of tricks to this thing and, and, and obviously that's where the village has its strength, is that we have. its strength, is that we have leverage and we have the ability to dictate what goes here because we own two-thirds of the property. So.
I want to go on a ledge. We're saying some things that might be scaring the developer in terms of the use. I mean, personally, if we're doing a straw poll, I, without even doing the economic study and all that, which I think would be helpful, but I do personally think this is a good use for this site. And I agree with everything I was just commenting about the, you know, the.
Impacts.
The impacts, thank you. So I would be in favor of, if we want to in good faith engage with the developer. I'm supportive of continuing this discussion pending hearing some public feedback, but I, if we're, the goal here is to give some informal direction, I'm personally supportive of continuing to explore this idea.
Should we hear from the public?
Yeah, we can hear from them. All right, well, now we're going to open it up for public comment. And what I would like to do, just a minute. You can go first, okay? We'll start in the first row and then we'll work our way back and we'll start with this gentleman over here.
John Phillips, I live at 134 Green Bay Road, the Hemp Hill House, for the last three years. Forty-five years previously, I lived on Briar Street, which is two blocks away, so I've dealt with this intersection my entire adult life. The traffic in that corner is the busiest corner in the entire North Shore. It's not just Nutria coming in and out. You've got a doctor's office with five doctors and people coming in and out all day long from nine o'clock to five o'clock. You've got the new coffee shop, which is very nice, but there's more cars coming in. The White Hen, you can hardly get a spot in there if you go in there at any time of day. To, I've seen some car accidents. I'm on the third floor out my window, which I can't believe. When I have friends come to my building, I tell them to be very careful when they park on Green Bay because the cars, when they get past Sunset, they speed up to beat the light. And it's unbelievable. There was a car, a kid flipped a car before Christmas. I've never seen anything like it. I saw it live happen. I mean, the entire car flipped out. He was thrown out. I mean, I don't know what happened to him. They took him away in an ambulance. So I think that's a huge problem. To build something dense like that, I mean, I don't think Wenecta's striving to be the next downtown Deerfield or Evanston. I mean, we've been pretty built up, and the new building where Fells was is going to be a big footprint. And the Chase is building the new building, which is bigger, and it's just more and more cars. If you build a place for nursing home, you've got three shifts of employees coming through, probably 40 or 50 people a shift. I mean, I've lived through the nursing home scene with four parents, and there's constant activity. You've got food delivery, you've got the kitchen staff, you've got the laundry trucks. Where's the lane for the, who's going to pay all the extra for the police and fire coming in? Do you know how many times an ambulance goes to a nursing home? My mom was at the Presbyterian home for three years. I went almost every day, and every day, there was another ambulance. And when she went, and they send you a bill for it now, and it would just be overwhelming, I think, to add that. You have a building that's much higher than square footage. When you talk about taxes, I'll guarantee you, if we, if the village needs this money and wants to sell it, it has to be opened and offered to other developers. The demand for single fam, for couples downsizing, I have four, I've been a Realtor for 38 years, sold almost all my houses in the Nutria towns. I have four couples right now trying to find a one-floor place. The red brick building across from the post office on Oak Street, there was an apartment that came on a month ago. The last one that size sold 14 months ago for $8.80. This was on for $9.90. There were 28 couples that looked at it. I was at, there were seven bids. My couple bid a million two and were fourth, I think. I mean, the, you know, people that have lived here all their lives and now their kids are here want to stay here, and that's the demand. A developer could build a not-so-dense, one-floor, two- or three-story building, and often, just like our building, it would sell out before they were finished. I've had more people call me about, well, what are these apartments? Well, they're going to be rentals where Fells was. I mean, who wants to park out $5,000, $8,000 a month? Demand on the parking is, I think, very unrealistic. The police and fire departments, I know, because I've been involved in some of these things through the years, and the different towns are different, but you have to have a road where a fire engine and an ambulance can go in and around the building. I mean, I don't see that anywhere sketched on it. And, you know, a pretty plaza with steps and everything. You know, you talk about, well, it'd be nice for the older people to be by the high school. There's no one in assisted care or memory care going out for a walk. The 75-year-olds in the independent living are not going to stroll down and visit with the 15-year-olds in front of school. I mean, that's just silly to say that. I mean, people live, I know how they live because I've done it, and they go in the place because they want to be taken care of. And I think this is, you know, somewhere out of nowhere, nobody in town seems to have heard about this, and I think this has to be seriously looked at. If the town's looking for some money, I would just pave over the section Wenecta owns and rent it for $3,000 a year to the Nutria kids to park their cars. It would stay open. That would be the easiest, that would be an easy solution. It'd be, it'd be sold out overnight. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anybody else in the first row?
Well, I kind of want to echo everything he says. He's kind of, you know, hit on most of my topics about parking, ambulances, healthcare workers, there's, oh, my mic, I'm so short. My name, Nancy Ritter. And I've been a Wenecta resident for, I don't know, Mike, how long? Forty-two years. Oh, my gosh. Anyway, and I'm 70 years old, so I'm, you know, listening to all this stuff about wanting to live where your kids live and all that other stuff, and I totally get it. This is not a good use of that land. I'm very sorry. It is, as John said, between food service truck, healthcare workers, that he said, three shifts coming in and out, there's laundry trucks, all that. But most importantly, we're talking about senior citizens here, right? Okay? Does anybody think about the children? We have Greeley students on the other side of the tracks, on the west side of the tracks, who have to cross Green Bay Road to get to Greeley. Now they have to encounter this. This is a safety issue, and I know the council is concerned with the safety of our community. I don't want my child crossing, my grandchild, forget the child part, that's over, but my grandchild crossing Green Bay Road, having to deal with all that chaos, maybe an ambulance coming in and out, all these workers coming in and out. These are grammar school kids. Okay, also, you mentioned the parking garage, Nutria students. Well, that's going to be interesting. They already congregate in the tunnel at Sunset and all that. So now you're opening up a big, big can of worms with the Nutria students. So why don't we start thinking about the younger people in the community? This is not in their best interest. The traffic will be terrible. Those kids going to White Hen, and I work out on Green Bay Road, too, and I'm going to rush to my workout class, you got to be on high alert because they do not care if it's a red light, green light, or anything. They're crossing to get their Skittles or whatever they're getting. And you know what? This is not, this is not the place for this kind of development. It simply is not. If you all are concerned with the safety of our community and the children, I get the seniors. The seniors will find a place. There's always a place. I had an elderly mother, and we all have up here. I'll need a place probably at some point in time. And you know what? I wouldn't vote for that if I was 90 years old. And we have a 97-year-old man living in the building across the street. He couldn't be here today, but he's not in favor of it. So you know what? Don't think all the elderly people, you know, you're sitting there thinking, oh, we need more of that. I think you got to think about the children who are crossing the street, who are going to be around there. Indian Hill Park is right there. My grandson, my grandchild is there every day playing at the park. Now you've got people from that building, healthcare workers, whoever, staff, whatever. They may take their lunch break over there, have a cigarette or two. Now you've got some stuff going on over there that I don't want to see, quite frankly. I don't want to see it in my village. So, anyway, if you care about the safety of the children, I think you got to rethink this. I'm sorry, your plan looked lovely. Take it to another community. We don't want it here.
Thanks, Nancy. Next, please.
I forgot to say.
No, that's okay. You've had your time. Hit the mic, I'm sorry. Come on up.
So, I'm Mike Ritter, just to have a couple of things to add. I agree that it's a, well, first of all, I think we all seem to be under the assumption that we need to develop the property. And I think Rob is the only one who mentioned that, you know, perhaps we should have open space, which I think would be far preferable to any development. But if it's decided that the property should be developed, I agree that there's much more demand for empty nester living than assisted living. And I, it's weird for me to say this, but I'm a senior citizen, and I know a lot of other senior citizens.
Join the club.
Who are in the position of selling their homes. They're not looking for assisted living. They're looking for, you know, a smaller apartment, one-floor apartment. But no matter what is decided, if it's decided that the property should be developed, I hope it's not something with the massing and the scale of this proposal, because I think it's just way too large and really, you know, unattractive. That, you're, no offense on your architecture ability, but I think the scale of the project is way too large for that area, given the traffic concerns and everything else. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Hi, I'm Tina Filippini. I live in the Hemp Hill House across the street, 134. First of all, I appreciate your presentation, and I really appreciate all your comments, many of which I just think were right spot on, you especially, about, you know, you brought up the traffic and the ambulances, and, you know, others have brought that up. And it wasn't until my sister, who, you know, even mentioned the word, we never heard the word "safety," never. And I think that that, I mean, we want those who would live there to be safe, of course, but, you know, the community around there, both the students and residential, that's completely residential. And now, I, when I want to cross over Green Bay, you know, because I'm on the, what side of the street? The west side of the street. I will, I don't even go to where the traffic lights are because with, it's so confusing with how many, you know, we've got that street that's coming out of, is it Briar? And, so there were, there's like four lights. You don't even know what button to press to get, you know, the pedestrian thing on there. So I actually prefer to just look both ways and run across. No, I do. I mean, it's a nightmare over there. And as far as the parking, my experience, you know, just my own experience, there's going to be a lot of backup if you have the kids coming, and they all come at the last minute, I see them running there and whatever. I don't know if there'd be like a gate thing that would go down, or they're just going to drive in. It's going to be backed up. I mean, the flow is going to be really, really slow. So I think that, the density, that's just, and I'm also concerned about the Indian Hill Park, which is just so beautiful and so quiet. And I just think that there'd be a lot of lingering people. And, you know, frankly, I mean, I love the high school students, but, I mean, I see them, I mean, they've got their headphones on, and they've got their electronic whatever gadget that they're spinning around on. They're going to be hanging out at that little public, whatever you call it, you know, the atrium or, you know, it's at nighttime, that's, oh my God, that's going to be a nightmare. And then, you know, frankly, just the sound, the noise, and the lights that would be shining on those of us on this, on the other side of the street, and I'm sure people who live in the chimneys will feel the same way. So, I mean, I agree with so many other people. I would rather see structures built that are just, you know, for people downsizing, and I don't want to live across the street from a hospital. Essentially, that's what it would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in the first row? Nope. Second?
Here he comes.
Sorry. So I'm just going to add a little bit to what was said here. Traffic definitely is a big concern. Anyone here?
Could you share your?
I'm sorry. My girl, my name is Gerd Naidany. I also live at Hemp Hill House, 134 Green Bay Road, across from the lot. So if anyone thinks that this is a good idea, just go spend 30 minutes in the morning between 8:00 and 8:30, and 3:30 to 4:00. At 3:30, you see the crowd of kids waiting for the bus there, there on the street because that sidewalk is filled. In addition to that, that entrance point there, as was mentioned here, the back up there on Sunset, going back to the church and maybe to Music Institute, that's another point where I see problems. And one thing that we have, we're forgetting here, this is where these green areas, when that train goes by, I guarantee you, you're measuring 120 decibels on those green areas down there. They better be deaf because they're not going to be enjoying that grass over there. So, and to your point, should we ask for other proposals in our building? When we wash the carpet, we ask for three quotes. When we wash a carpet. This thing, definitely you should get more proposals, more ideas. And I understand the developer is in the retirement business, and all due respect, when you have a hammer, everything looks like a nail. So if it's too dense to do anything, then maybe we shouldn't do anything. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else in the room like to speak?
Couldn't wait. No, I just can't wait to be up there. Scott Myers on Church Road, so right around the corner. I think the challenge, right, tonight is a concept gets brought in, and all of a sudden, it's like, let's get right down into designing windows and, you know, arches and safety issues, and, you know, we're down into the details because it seems we got to ask these questions. I think it's great to have a catalyst come in. It begins the conversation. This is the beginning of the conversation. There's no way that obviously any kind of townhouse or one-story house is going to be able to be there just because of the parking requirement, right? If you have that many parking places you have to put underground, you have to go up high. So I think I would start, rather than tasking the developer to go back and come up with more designs, I think that taking three, four months for the council to say, all right, well, what should we do with this space? What can we do? Is U.P. basically saying the only way that we will be involved is if Dell Realty is involved? Okay, then that's one thing. If they don't have a contract anymore and we can approach them again and see if we can get control of it, or partner with somebody else, I think we should do that. I think whatever goes there, and I, and I'm kind of with Kirk. I'm not against this idea. I think that there are issues that need to be addressed, but I think that this is a perfect place in our village for massing, to enable people who want to age in place to stay in the village, right? Is it got to be targeted to the, not us young folks, you know, the 60 and 70-year-olds, but more the older folks, the 90-year-olds? That's a question for us to, you know, to give guidance. Because I think that if we said to Dell, hey, you know, we think this should be bigger units, aged for a little bit younger group, but still kind of age in place, they could probably come up with a solution. But we got to figure out, first of all, what's the strategy for this space, and then let's reengage the conversation. Because it's unfair to them to say, oh, start coming up with designs to deal with, you know, traffic and safety. And I'm sure they can, right? You know, they're creative folks, so.
Thanks, Scott. Anybody else back there? Three minutes, Jeff.
Jeffrey List from Wenecta Muse. I was lucky enough to get in when I was still considered one of the younger residents, which wasn't that long ago. I have no real comments on the specifics of the proposal, but I have some questions that I think you ought to take into consideration. You know, first of all, you got to remember certain things like use, demographics, height. Our concepts people throw around, they mean different things in different contexts. And I know in Wenecta, from my experience watching this council for a good number of years and watching, being on the Willow Road Commission, height is Wenecta's bugaboo as much as four lanes were Northfield's bugaboo. And so it's just knee-jerk. I had a couple of comments on this procedure tonight. I went online and looked at the agenda, and none. I went online and looked at the agenda and none of these drawings were on there. So it's very, very hard to really come here with a considered opinion. So the little presentation was good, the comments around the table were excellent. The second thought is that when they did the showings for the village to come out and look at the different designs, I remember there were three different concepts for this property. And I'd just be curious to see what those were, just in comparison to this. But it makes a difference or not, I don't know. The building, I know these were very rough sketches, but when I took a look at this, the word that came to mind was monolith or pyramid. And then I saw the stuff in the back, and I don't know if this was meant to be what the thing would look like eventually, but I think that would, if you get to the point of liking the project, something would have to be done, I think, with that kind of facade. I could not tell, is there access to the upper level from the south? Or do you have to go all the way around from? Right now, you can get on the trains from the south, which is a big help. You can also get off the train to the south. If everybody's being funneled to the one place in the middle, that's going to make more congestion for people getting on and getting off. Other way here too, I couldn't understand how people would get to the east side of the track, southbound. That wasn't at all clear from this, which would need to be done. For reference to the underground parking, I mean, I remember the big discussions about, well, first of all, what to do with the post office site, and the other one was how to expand the Hubbard Woods parking structure and with maybe a lower level connecting right to the train tracks. And I remember there was a lot of concern about people, like you said, not wanting to go underground. And I don't think, know anybody ever reached a conclusion because of the project never went that far enough that made a difference. But that was a major concern to the village and people back then. I also couldn't see on this, for example, the ramps between B1 and B2, so I had no idea of the traffic flow. I was wondering, are there separate elevators for the residents and separate elevators for the public? And is there a long walk from some parking place to where that elevator is going to be? Stairs, I couldn't see here, it's very small scale, whether there are stairs for people who want to walk up instead of waiting for an elevator, which is right now what most people do at the Hubbard Woods train station. They just take the stairs. Definitely would like to see if you do something more elevation drawings. Couldn't quite picture how this thing looks from.
Yeah, this was just highly conceptual, definitely.
Yes, very highly conceptual.
Lot of good, specific questions.
I also thought that there was no showing for the bus drops, bus drop-offs and commuter parking. And I assume that there was no easy way to put a pedestrian ramp rather than elevators and steps. And will the parking spaces, will the residential parking spaces be physically separate from the parking for the public? And would there be any physical separation between parking for the public and student parking? Which would be an interesting question. And then, of course, there's the big zoning problem, as I remember during the big discussion about the little exemption on Green Bay Road just north of, I think, Elm Street about what the parking requirement is. We're supposed to have one and a half spaces per unit, which actually works out just perfectly for the muse, by the way, with a lot of old people.
We're going on five minutes, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. That was basically some of the thought, the things I had for you to think about and enjoy. I'm glad you're doing it, not me.
Thank you. Oh, careful. Next, please. All right, it looks like we've run the gamut on public comment. We'll bring it back up. Any final thoughts on this?
I do, I do want to comment about the woman who brought up the Greeley students. If anyone remembers when they did the changeover to having kids on the others, it was a huge issue about the kids crossing Green Bay Road. And now there's a crossing guard over by the Willow Underground thing, but I did want you to know that I thought about that, too. There is a lot of different demographics crossing that road during the mornings and the afternoons. You're looking at me.
Thank you all out there for all of your thoughtful comments. I know you opened this meeting by saying this is just a conversation starter, it's a concept. I recognize in our, in our comp plan, we identified this site, among a few others, as potential development one day. I have to say, when I opened my packet, I felt like, whoa, we skipped a whole step. When did we all decide?
You weren't here.
Pardon?
You weren't here.
At the beginning to say, yes, let's start looking at developing this site.
This was before you were on council.
Right, I was on council. Okay, so.
Pre-COVID.
So if, if that is in fact something that we're concretely saying, we're going to start looking for ways to develop it, I feel like jumping straight to one concept, we've skipped that step to say, what do we want to develop? What do we want there? Do we want open land? Do we want condos? I know, Scott, you raised the point that I think the part, if someone would build 2,500 square foot condos, which we have seen built, the Walden and other ones, for empty nesters, the parking requirement is a lot less than this would be, right? Because it's like two per unit. So, I mean, that's a cheap one. I'm not even suggesting that's what the solution is. I'm saying, I think if we're going to go down this path, we need to discuss what are the concepts and what do we want to ask?
Correct. Just so everybody understands, two things in play here. One, I'm going off with something that I've worked on for a long time and thought about for a long time. At least wanted to get it on the table for the public consumption, okay? Number two, Dial had reached out to us early in the process, along with, you were with Related originally, right?
Yeah.
Right? So they had a local presence and, and, you know, it became clear that if we were going to be able to get a look at something, it would have to be with somebody who has access to the property. Because we did spend a lot of time, and Rob had a lot of staff time, just trying to get information on how we might go about acquiring it and really ran into a lot of brick walls. So, you know, certainly, if this wasn't my last month in office, would this have waited a little bit longer? Probably, you know, but I think it's something important. It's been on my radar since I first started my public service. You know, I have heard time and time again, I know a lot of people have disputed this, but, you know, there's a lot of people who aren't 70 and 80 who want to stay in this town and be with their families and be close. And I've heard it from a lot of people. Some have sat at this dais and have told me, gee, I wish there was a place I could go to now. So, you know, it's not like there isn't a need there. It's not like there isn't a need nationally, let's face it.
Right, that's what I.
So, you know, I looked at it from the standpoint from, as a developer, you've got a need in the community, you've got bifurcated property with multiple ownership, how do you get this thing put together so you can have a conversation? That's why Dial's here. In deference to them, certainly, I do understand RFP is probably the appropriate way to go through to see what else you can get out there. And certainly, that's something that we would, we would highly encourage Dial to participate in, because they seem to be good partners and they seem to understand the public-private arrangement, which isn't always easy for a developer to get. So, sorry if I caused some consternation here tonight, but, you know, this is something that we had started conversation on well before COVID and then, then COVID.
I mean, one other sort of minor thought, when we ask if we want to give, dedicate more staff time to looking at this right now? I have to admit, we've got post office, we've got Hubbard Woods streetscape, there's a lot of big projects that we're, you know, tasking.
Well, look at, Bob can put it in his shaker cup and he can decide if it's ever going to pop out or not.
This is a long-term discussion, but still, I mean, we can't deny that practicality, I guess. Yeah.
Yes, Ken.
And I think that's a good point, Chris. You know, this crosses into open space questions with the caucus, other public properties. We're going to be dealing with the post office. We can double back and look at this property as well. I think we maybe need to have a bigger conversation about these specific properties and development and what we want to do, how we want to handle open space. And I, you know, it never occurred to me, well, just based on this conversation and some of the public comments, it didn't occur to me that we would send Dial back to come back with some revamped property review or anything like that. I mean, that would seem to be not fair to them. I think we have some work on our end and we can proceed on that basis.
Right.
So we've had the conversation.
Yep. Some good food for thought.
Exactly right.
I hope.
I think that's right, and I think we should, this has been very helpful. They've spent money putting this together, right? And it's starting the conversation, I think, and very grateful for you coming together with a proposal for us, or concept for us to start the conversation. I guess one question I have for, just so I'm up to speed, by open space, are we saying that we're thinking about having another park here? Because don't we have a parking, isn't there agreement in place with Nutria for parking?
Well, parking counts as open space to certain people, too.
Oh, okay. Is that?
To be discussed. That would be to be discussed, I would think.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I view that as open space, but maybe that's not the concept that the caucus question was geared around as open. Maybe they were dealing with park space, green space, but this, this is open. It's open to the Hemp Hill people, it's open to the, you know, people that live around the neighborhood and.
It's open to 212 cars.
And 212 cars.
Okay. I just didn't know if I missed a beat because I wasn't on the board or, you know, when you talked about this pre-COVID, I just.
I think this was just, I think the conversation was more about publicly owned space. Weneka owns village-owned property. That's what this sort of.
The original assignment was, hey, Rob, go buy the property so we can assemble it and then we can control it and send it out. Right. That was the original. And then with the UP-related Dial relationship, this seemed like the way to go, so.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And I still think it might have some, some capacity. There's a lot of tweaking that needs to be done between now and whenever. So, hope you guys talk about it someday. All right.
Teeing it up.
Huh?
Thanks for teeing it up again.
Stir the pot a little on my way out the door.
Sure.
Hey, I guess we're there. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Yeah, so moved. That's a, that's closed session. I don't have to do it for this.
Just closed.
Second.
I was afraid to look anywhere else, Bridgette.
Can expand your.
Okay, that's a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned. Thank you.